I'm going to open this meeting of the June 13, 2023, meeting of the Air Planning Board. The first item is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
At the MRPC meeting last Thursday, I became aware of the fact that the appointments for the MRPC candidate from the planning board needs to be appointed by the end of the month. I would hope that we could add that to the administrative announcements.
Yes, let's do that. It's a MRPC.
MRPC appointment, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't there, there July 1st year, I just didn't know.
So we have an amendment to the motion. Is that acceptable to the person who's seconded?
Yes.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have unanimous vote for that. Next is we have two issues related to sureties and bonds. So first, we have a release of the covenant bond for Riley Jane Farm. I believe that has my understanding that has been completed. Do you have a letter?
I have a letter from Mr. Vanskelkwe.
Would you mind reading that into the record?
Be happy to. Department of Public Works, May 10, 2023, to the Air Planning Board, One Main Street, Air Mass. Regarding the release of cash escrow, Riley Jane Farm subdivision, Phase Two. Dear Board Members, Planning Board currently holds a cash escrow of $5,000 of surety for grass restoration per memorandum of understanding, MOU with the town. As a reminder, the subdivision has been accepted by the town. CJ Moore, the developer, is seeking release of the cash escrow. During the week of May 1, 2023, the developer hired Penards Landscape, who completed a high receding of the areas requiring restoration. Therefore, I am recommending the Planning Board release the $5,000 in cash escrow. If you have any questions or require any additional information, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Dan Vanskelkwe, P.E., Town of Air, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. We have a motion for the release for Riley J Farm.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of this release?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous.
Great, thank you.
We also have a sure-
I have this abstain because I have a conflict there.
Which one?
This.
Sure, the next one?
Oh, the one we did.
Okay.
So it's for- One abstain.
One abstention, four ayes, one abstention, Heather? Surety bond for Shaker Mill Pond. So what we have here is Dan Vanskelkwe, the Director of DPW, arrived at a number of $60,505.50 for the surety bond for the remainder of any work on the Shaker Mill Pond. And Mr. Aho, the applicant for Shaker Mill Pond, has delivered the check to the town and to Samantha Benoit. So I think we're in a good place to agree to the surety bond at that amount and we acknowledge your exception of cash.
Great. May I have the number, please? I'll make a motion.
$60,000?
I want to clarify something.
Oh.
It's not a surety bond, is it cash?
Yes, I'm sure, a surety cash, yes.
Cash payment, yeah.
Surety cash payment, thank you.
We use those interchangeably, I know.
Would you like to make that motion?
I'd like to move that the Planning Board accept on the behalf of the Town of Air, a cash bond in the amount of $60,505.50 as recommended by the Director of DPW for the work needing to be completed at Shaker Mill Pond.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we have five ayes.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
There you go. I just need you to know the number.
Regarding Nusoya, we have received a letter from the applicant's attorney, Tom Gibbons. He has asked to extend the public hearing to our next one on June 27, and he's also given us an extension on our decision to July 25. With that said, I need to, we have to go through the process of a motion to open and then continue.
Move to continue the site plan special permit for Aqua for Overlake District and Stormwater Permit Hearings for Nusoya Foods USA, One New England Way, for proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with related site improvements.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Did you move to continue it or did you move to open it?
Sorry, move to continue the continued site. I stumbled. Move to open, thank you.
Move to open?
Move to open the continued site plan.
And does the whoever-
Yes.
Yes, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Now I need another motion to continue to June 27.
Would you like me to read the letter from Tom Gibbons?
Yes, sure. Read that into the record.
June 13, 2023, Town of Air Planning Board, One Main Street, Air Mass, from the Law Offices of Thomas A. Gibbons, PC. Regarding Nusoya Foods USA LLC, our file number 22-8009. Dear Honorable Members of the Town of Air Planning Board, please let this letter serve as a quester to continue the public hearing regarding Nusoya Foods USA LLC from June 13, 2023 to June 27, 2023. In addition, this letter will serve as confirmation of the applicant's agreement that the time for the planning board to complete the review process is extended from July 11, 2023 to July 25, 2023. Please notify my offices the time of the June 27, 23, Town of Air, 2023 Town of Air Planning Board meeting. In the meantime, if you have any questions or concerns regarding this matter, please don't hesitate to contact me. Very truly yours, Thomas A. Gibbons, Esquire.
Thank you.
And move to continue the continued site plan special permit for Aqua for Overlake District and Stormwater Permit Hearings for Nusoya Foods USA, One New England Way-
No, no, oh, yes, I'm sorry, you're right.
For proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with related site improvements to the June 27, 2023 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any, excuse me, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. And that brings us to Air Solar 2. So I'm going to ask-
I'm sorry.
A motion?
Move to open the continued site plan modification public hearing for Prometheus Power Group, Air Solar 2 LLC, Zero Washington Street. Application for site plan modification to address amended erosion control, drainage, stormwater management, and site access features for the Air Solar 2B site.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And Chair votes aye, and I believe Mr. Diskin has to excuse himself. Thank you. Would all the parties involved in this discussion approach the table? And as you do, just say your name and your role, and all of you are invited. Let's bring the chairs up with you and we'll sit around.
How many can use this one?
So I recognize many of the faces. I'm sorry, I-
It's been a few years. Adam Costa, me, Talan Ray Costa.
Oh, I'm sorry, of course, thank you.
I'll get the council.
And then, of course-
I'll Rohit Garg with Air Solar 2.
Cal Goldsmith, GPR.
What's up, GPR?
Hit the comfy chair.
Jim Thorne from Green International.
Thank you.
Peer review.
So after consultation with numerous parties in town and after reflection, I'm going to change the direction of this discussion. Original intention was that we'd go through the 58 items as listed by Green International, give the applicant time to respond, and we can ask their questions, et cetera. However, I think we're at a point where we need a path to completion on this. And I think that if there's one thing that we're unanimous, we have unanimous agreement is that we'd like this to be done. Am I wrong in that or am I right?
You're right on the button.
Mm-hmm. So to get to that pathway, here's where my thinking is. Instead of agonizing about all the legal nuances of which rules apply, I think it would be more productive to say two things. One, regarding the stormwater, can we get to something that works and it works to the way that DPW can approve and live with? That's one. Number two, regarding the road or driveway, I'm going to call it an access road because that's functionally what it's going to do. And one of the significant changes that has happened since the original approval is that there is no longer any consideration of A&R lots on the property. Therefore, that access road really is just for routine inspections and potentially some emergency vehicles. That's it. It's not going to be, quote, "traffic" on this road. Given that, where I'd like to go with the discussions of the access road is not to get tangled up in how does this meet optimal, but where do we get the road to a place where it's acceptable to the following three parties: DPW, police, and fire for public safety. And I want to hold that as the standard because I think that's just far more productive at this point than anything else. So here's what I propose. I would like us to spend this meeting with the help of Green and their input, what they've learned, with, of course, your input, the applicant's input and applicant's representatives, and, of course, the board with their feedback, and arrive at a punch list of items that have to be completed before we can approve the project. Let's figure out what those are exactly and precisely. My thinking is this. What I'd like to do to conclude this entire process is see the completion of the punch list as discussed today, if we were able to finish that discussion today. Two, we're going to want to see the complete as-built plants with the completion of the work. And then, three, and perhaps most importantly, we want to see, negotiate a surety with the applicant between the applicant and DPW so that should the stormwater or the road fail, the town is covered because there's money available for necessary repairs. That's the proposal we're putting on the table. Any feedback from anybody?
I'd like to address it if I could, if the board members don't have any feedback. So certainly, we appreciate the practical approach. As you had said at the outset, it's our objective to get to the finish line. It's been a long process. Have no objection to your thought that, or your approach, that what we would end this meeting with today, hopefully, is a punch list of items that need to be completed, that are priorities, that need to satisfy the planning board, but also relevant town departments. Presuming that that punch list is consistent with the requirements that exist, I wouldn't want the fire department to make a demand that is beyond the four corners of what the law requires.
Mr. Costa, I assure you that the punch list would be fundamentally based on what was reviewed by Green. So things that we've already on the table. There's no new items on the table.
That's great. And I've reviewed in full the materials from Green, so I'm comfortable.
We're not springing any new things.
I'm smiling because I don't want to move the goalposts again. The goalposts in this project have moved multiple times.
Yes, well-
For lots of different reasons, so, yeah.
Right. And nor do we. I guess the only nuance I want to raise is this, of course, is a permitting process, and it's a unique permitting process, and I can appreciate it from both sides of the table. I'm often representing boards like yours. This project was approved years ago, not once, but twice. The project then began construction. The project itself, the solar array is fully constructed. We're dealing, of course, with the driveway or access road, whatever you wish to call it. So to the extent that what we're going to arrive at is a punch list of items, and I think you said that need to be completed before we can approve the project, if we were back in 2019, where we refer you in the permitting context, asking you to issue a permit for a solar photovoltaic facility with an access roadway, we wouldn't have a shovel in the ground yet. You would simply be asking for design plans. You'd be peer reviewing those designs, exactly what you did back in 2019, 2018, 2019. So what I want to be sure we're not requiring as part of this process is that, because you referred to completed as-built plans, you know, we're looking for an approval of what we're showing you, what we've built and we intend to complete to the point of an as-built plan. But I don't think that this process has to, I don't think we have to hit the pause button in this process until the site is fully completed, buttoned up, good to go. That's never the case with a permitting process, right? That's why you have typically a town planner. I don't know if you currently have a town planner, but you typically have a town planner. You've got a building inspector to perform those final reviews and sign-offs, fire, police, so on and so forth. So we have no issue with the concept that you want to review the plans we put before you and you want to create a punch list of items that we would need to satisfy before you're prepared to sign off. What I want to avoid is a circumstance where, you know, we've got a few more things to button up on the site and you're saying, well, we've got to continue you to July. We've got to continue to August. We've got to continue to September because, you know, you don't have, we don't have a final sign-off from the building official. We don't have a final sign-off from the fire department. You never have those final sign-offs because typically when an applicant's before you, it's simply for permits and approvals, and there's no project under construction at that time. We're just here in the context of a modification.
Yeah. I agree partially. As you yourself said, so many things have changed in the interim. And what we're asking here is that we're willing to be flexible, and we expect the same from you guys, some reciprocity here. And what I want to be sure is that the town is not left holding any bag whatsoever. That's what's really most important to me, that the town feel confident that everything's fulfilled to a point where it's built to a reasonable condition that's acceptable and durable. I'm going to ask Jeff to respond because he may have an insight I don't have.
I'm going to, I've heard both sides, and I truly do appreciate, Turna Costa, your point, where we are in the process. And I think we could spend a lot of time kind of hammering out this. I would like to propose, and we did this once before, I think, with the gas station years ago, that we put on the table the issues that we think are showstoppers, and we talk them through before we decide if it has to be complete before we sign it, if it ha-
Is that fair enough?
I think we're in a situation where we're in a reasonable place, and if we argue about who's more reasonable than the other part, we won't get to the reasonable part.
Sure.
Is that, if I may offer that?
And I have no desire to spend time arguing when we can spend time making progress.
I get it, I get it. So that would be my suggestion, Mr. Chair.
And I will add, if I could, you referenced surety as well. I'll have to look back at the full decision, but my recollection is that there was a surety negotiated, and there are provisions in the original and the amended decisions requiring surety be provided to ensure exactly what you proposed, that the stormwater management system functions, that the roadway functions as it's supposed to.
And I'm probably the only one with a walking memory of this, which is probably much, not quite as good as yours at this point, but somewhat. So I, we did discuss surety, we discussed decommissioning and stuff like that. And I think what the board's concern is that, you know, should there be a washout, gosh, God forbid, on the road or something that impeded the road, that we're not stuck in a position where it's not getting taken care of. Okay, that you can still get back into your site. We can still get in there if this is a public safety problem. So I, I'm the same, if you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, no, go for it.
Along the same lines as, let's put the items on the table and discuss them. I think that's also something. Because when the road was originally, I do recall our past superintendent saying, "I don't know that there should be any surety for the road," is probably one of the discussions. I just don't remember where that was in the whole concept. And so that needs to be revisited, if that's fair.
So that was actually a point I was going to make, is that this is not a project where the town is somehow responsible for providing that access. Should it deteriorate, like a subdivision, for instance, or a site plan, a driveway coming into a commercial facility or something where if something goes wrong, the developer's long gone, people turn and everybody in the subdivision says, "Hey, town, you plowed the road."
Yeah, I get that.
"When are you going to fix it?"
We're going to need to hack that out.
So there's a self-interest-
Yeah.
-at heart here to make sure that our guys can continue to get back to the solar field, and if something went wrong, they'd have to fix it.
I got it. I just, I just, I think the planning board needs to be able to stand up tall and say, "We took care of this."
Sure.
COVID, the world shut down, there were problems. All these things happened to us. Now let's button it up and get it done, so.
Yeah, and I think the other, your point on the road is well taken. The stormwater is a little bit different. In fact, it's a lot different because if that fails, that can have immediate impact on our wetlands. So what I want to do is, I want to check on what the previous surety for that is and just double-check with DPW if they feel confident that what the change has made since that arrangement was, that was made, is that surety sufficient. And I think that's fair because things have changed dramatically since the original plans.
And also, if I remember correctly, the surety was for decommissioning. We got to make sure that that's going to be available for something else. It's details, I think. And I'm not going to rely on my memory now on Turna Costa. I'm not going to make you rely on your, I would not ask you to rely on your memory, so, yeah.
That's fine. I mean, we, I think we disagree as to the scope of the changes, but again, we're not here to go back and forth, and you call it substantial, I call it insubstantial. You know, we're here, we had that opportunity. You know, we were approached by the town through town officials and through town council a number of months ago concerning these modifications. Our position initially was, these modifications don't rise to the level of modifications that require amended permits. We had the option of fighting that fight. We said, "Why are we going to fight that fight?" Rohit had to make the judgment call. He said, "Why am I going to fight with the town when I can just come back? I'll make amendment applications. I'm going to burn three, four months in the process." Turns out to be five or six months in the process. But do it the right way. So we're here. We want to cooperate. We want to get to the finish line, so.
And we do too. Okay. So let's, I want to start with the most germane issues, and I'm going to ask Jim to say, you know, you have a number of comments regarding the stormwater system, and I wonder if you could walk it through. And in your opinion, you just share with us your observations of, yes, you'll have the opportunity to respond if you wish to do so. But I want to get at, where do we want to bring the stormwater to? If it has to be anything other than where it is at this present moment, where does it need to go next? Where, can you lead us off on that conversation, Jim?
Yeah. So you can start with the tree box filters. So-
Which item are you working on?
Uh, this is number 19. So when we were on site, we did not observe the overflow pipe. So I just wanted to confirm. But in your statement, it says, you know, it's an constructed plan except for, you know, the CMU blocks. So-
This is going to be Hut addressing that.
Okay.
Mine forward, Hut. So the eight-inch HDP overflow pipe was installed for each of the tree box. Some of them were covered by the traffic cones as we saw during the sidewalk. Obviously, that's not in a condition where it should be, but dropping grade is supposed to be installed right over the-
I think that's been done.
It's been done. Oh, correct. So I don't know if you guys remember during the sidewalk, going through each of the tree box, you can see that there was a traffic cone just covering the overflow pipe. So that is the eight-inch overflow pipe that we're talking about.
Does that satisfy you, Jim? Does that seem like a reasonable response to you, to your concern?
Um, yeah, if the overflow pipe is installed, I think, you know, that was a big issue that we saw. So if it is installed, then that's good because I know you are directing, you have speed bumps directing towards them. And if there's no overflow, you know, it could cause some ponding in that area. So that overflow alleviates the ponding.
Okay. What else do we have regarding the stormwater, Jim?
So, yeah, so the next one is on 27. This relates to the east and, east and west infiltration basins. So based off of the plans and, you know, out in the field, it looks like there's a steep drop-off from the roadway into the basins. Looks like it's deeper than two to one. Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook for Infiltration Basins recommends three to one. Also, you know, in terms of mowing and maintenance, you can't really mow on two-to-one slopes. You really need three to one. So we'd like to see those slopes soften.
So this comment is more, I guess, specifically for the West Basin. The East Basin has been dressed up a little bit since we have the sidewalk. I don't know if you guys remember. There's a little bit of a grading during the installation of the gravel lining of the East Basin. So that area got smoothed out a little bit, but more to address the West Basin. The West Basin was, you know, again, created because there was a need for turnaround for fire access to be outside of the solar area, which ended up trapping the water, thus creating that particular basin. That basin is really there just to hold and detain water, not necessarily to treat it, but just to capture water as well as providing an overflow. You know, graded in two-to-one slope off the side. Again, not a public access to the town. It's more of a private drive, and I think, you know, if memory serves me right, during the sidewalk, we can see grass growing on that slope on the West Basin. So in terms of, you know, stability itself, it's probably better not to touch the basin. We are going to be cleaning it up to make sure that it's properly drained as well as removing all the, you know, construction fine particle that's clogging on that basin. So a little bit of dressing up, but not necessarily regrading it to disturb it even more because the slopes are being stabilized.
I don't think we have any plans of mowing on that slope either. That's not-
Yeah, so my question is, regarding the slope, is this a safety issue or is it a stormwater performance issue or both? I want to understand, what's at stake here?
It's a stabilization issue and in terms of erosion and in terms of maintenance, in terms of mowing and maintaining. Because usually, if you have an infiltration basin, you tend to mow it to maintain it over time so that it functions properly. You don't let it just over, overgrow. So, you know, that's my concern.
The only other point I'd raise on that is in this basin, it does capture a fair amount of water, and it does, it has been infiltrating. We saw that today. I think Rohit cleaned a lot, or cleaned a lot of the leaves out of that to have it function better. But there is an overflow pipe in that basin that then goes to a discharge pipe on the other side of the road. So there is a method for that water to get out of there and be handled, should it, should it rise up beyond the level of where you'd normally expect to see it. But everything's so sandy out there. I mean, stuff just disappears into the ground in a hurry, and I think that's what we've been seeing out there.
Good. Thank you.
Jeff? I recognize the treachery of a two-to-one versus a three-to-one. Running landscaping company for a long, working landscaping for a long time, and you can't put machines on it. One of the questions I have for this, though, is without regrading, do we have any kind of a maintenance and a plan for maintenance for this that we can put forward? In other words, that tree box would need to be visited X number of times a year to pull out sediment and stuff like that?
Any sort of long-term operation? I'm sorry.
Yeah, O&M. I'm going to ask you to speak up a little bit. I'm partially hard to hear.
No problem. The original O&M that was originally filed, if you would approve, and that should address the infiltration basin, tree box filter, the catch basin, the B-grade half one. So all that had been addressed, and there is a schedule to kind of provide maintenance over time.
Okay. And I would assume that when the maintenance is being done, I would ask the proponent to make sure that they contact and make sure the town is aware of it so we don't end up in a situation where, did it get done? We don't know it didn't get done. Thanks.
So regarding this issue, obviously, we're not going to resolve this at the table. What I want to ask the plant, my colleagues at the board, is this a judgment call for DPW? If they're content with the slope and the response of the applicant, are we good with that?
I would say at the end of the day, we're not experts.
Right.
Right. And the last thing I want to do is override the DPW or the fire department or the lease department. So I think that's-
In sticking with your original request, absolutely.
Okay.
We don't got many people better with water than Dan.
So my feeling with that one is that if, even if it's not to spec per se, if it's acceptable to our authority, then it's acceptable to us.
All right. We'll talk, we'll work with them. If they want us to do something different, we'll go with they ask.
Jim, what else do we have regarding stormwater?
The next one is number 40. So this is talking about the test pit. You know, Massachusetts Handbook recommends, you know, usually a test pit per, well, they recommend three, but usually you have to have at least one per infiltration basin. And the West Basin, you know, doesn't have a test pit. And, you know, when we were on site, we saw that it was holding water. So we had concerns whether it did have separation of groundwater or bedrock, seeing how ledge is visible in the area.
So to answer that comment, during the time of the fire department request to move the turnaround area, that basin was excavated and essentially field verification was done to confirm that the soil is similar to the material that was up on the solar array. So sandy material, similar to it, similar groundwater level. So they were able to essentially verify the soil condition and leave that basin as it is. And looking at the bottom of the basin, I don't believe is a foot, further than a foot down from existing conditions.
Are we talking, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble imagining east and west. Are we talking about the infiltration basin that's close to ledge? Is that the one we're talking about?
No, the one at the very end, just before you go up the hill to the array.
Oh.
Turnaround, the turnaround section.
That's just starting to come up in the slope.
So again, I'm down a town planner and I'm not a hydrology expert. Jim, does that field testing an adequate proxy for a test pit?
I mean, that's essentially doing a test pit if they observed and dug. But, you know, it's hard to tell unless they actually measured how deep it would go. Like, did you dig deep, like, two feet below where you would?
So I have to say that the test verification was done by Kyle Bichard, who was the project engineer at the time. He is a licensed soil evaluator who's done it. I can't say for certain, you know, what he found, but he found it adequate at the time.
Did he sign and stamp it, his finding? He did?
We stamped the plant, sure. Or Nick stamped the plant, it's not Kyle.
So that- So, that, so that determination of field testing has been stamped? That is part of?
The plants have been stamped and show that.
So, what I'm getting at is there adequate documentation of the field testing that it is as Limhut has described it? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, the testing wasn't stamped on it.
Is there anything in writing? I'll get to you one second, Jeff. I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, no.
Okay, Jeff, what's your?
I'm going to recommend that we also turn to our, again, we have, we can get an opinion from a town employee, town engineer, and, uh, town engineers in the room. So, we may be able to get an opinion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm so sorry. Come on up. So, yeah.
Can seat for the previous discussion?
Yes, you can. Join us here, just, you know, just.
Again, I would.
I'm sorry, sir. Did you always have a beard?
Ah, yes, I have.
So, just say your name and role for the.
Yeah, for the record, I'm Matt Hurden, Town Engineer.
So, you've heard the previous conversation. Opinion on this?
So, I know there's back and forth between Green International and the applicant about the stormwater regulations. We agree that air stormwater regulations cannot be used to enforce this project. Your project came before. Our regulations were enacted, so that's just, we simply can't do that. It's obviously very typical engineering practice to take a test pit before you implement a stormwater BNP, which is best management, best management practice, infiltration basin, just to confirm that it's going to work. Because it's a critical aspect of the stormwater design. If it doesn't work, then the applicant can't, there's going to be more water running off the site than there was before. That's the biggest aspect of the stormwater management that he should have more of. At least the same amount of water, hopefully less, is running off the site. So, that's a little bit concerning, and though the test pit wasn't recorded, I'm a little surprised by that. So, it really, with the site, with the soils, from what I've seen, it's kind of an unusual mix between sand and ledge, so.
Exactly.
That's kind of the most troubling.
Very little clay out there.
Exactly. So, you know, what was said before by the applicant that there is, there's sandy soil out there. Yes, that can infiltrate very well, but there's also ledge out there. So, to not know, is there bedrock a foot under what was test pitted? That's kind of a concern to me. It's a critical, critical factor in regard to the stormwater calculations, which is the big, seminal that's very difficult to understand. But the stormwater calculations that were given us were in the proper format that Green was able to understand at all.
Right. And, and to kind of build on top of that, like, the overflow pipe for that basin, I believe, which I think I had another comment on, is, is high enough that, you know, essentially you want the overflow pipe to work before it overflows the roadway. But the way it's modeled or designed, it's higher than the roadway. So, it actually starts flooding the roadway before it would use the overflow pipe. So, if, if it doesn't infiltrate properly and, you know, water's filling up and not infiltrating, it's going to just kind of keep bonding up over time.
Is that number 49?
Yes.
So, let's take them one at a time. So, because this can get really muddled and the whole point of this meeting is clarity. So, for the first one regarding the test pit, you know, where do we stand on that? Do you, do you feel that you can arrive at appropriate? You feel confident in stormwater calculation numbers without it? And with the field, the informal field testing that Kyle Bouchard did? Or do we hold our ground and say, we got to get this test pit?
So, this is the basin that was added after the fact? Is that correct?
Right, this is the extra basin that was added.
I saw in the other basins that there were test pits taken, at least shown in the plan. I don't have the actual test pits. And again, they did provide that to you.
They did, yeah, they did provide the test pit information for the east basin.
This was kind of a field change. It was done during construction where he was there to observe it and see if it was adequate.
Understood. I guess the question that I have is how critical is that basin? I know it's a smaller one relative to the east or west basin. Still trying to get hold of it.
Yeah.
Yes, Limhut.
So, just so we're a little bit clear, typically, an infiltration basin is sized based on an impervious area increase so that you can provide groundwater recharge, treatment for TSS removal, and in the town of Ayr case, you know, total phosphorus removal now. In this case here, the smaller basin, which is the western basin, is not, is not doing any sort of treatment. Groundwater recharge, that's required per new impervious area because there is no new impervious area being proposed that's going into this basin. All that this basin is doing is holding water just because it's at a pocket where it's trapped between the turnaround area and the upgrading slope of the driveway. Should that basin go away, it will not affect the groundwater recharge, TSS removal, water holding volume, and so forth.
But it might impact your peak rates?
Our peak rate for the two-year storm, we have a decrease of 0.2 CFS from the approved condition. We're not increasing it in the 10- or 100-year storm by a good, you know, 10 CF, I want to say. I'll have to look at the numbers. But we're already improving the two-year storm event under the ASGO condition from the approved.
Matt, is that acceptable? That there's not a critical piece of the infrastructure and the numbers will be met? Is that acceptable?
It's acceptable. So, if there's no infiltration credit being taken for that basin, then it's acceptable in that regard? Jim, if you have any comment?
Yeah, I think that's okay. And I think that leads into the next one that I.
Yeah, that one, but number 49, though, about the overflow pipe being higher than the road, though. That's a different, yeah, please talk about that, Limhut.
So, just so we're clear, the overflow that's set is not the only overflow available to that basin. There is a, I want to say an eight-inch pipe that is directing water around the turnaround area for the emergency vehicle, leading it to the bigger basin, the east basin. So, that is the primary overflow or the primary outlet for said basin. Should that fail or become inundated, part of the driveway, not the whole thing, will somewhat, will be somewhat flooded, but it'll still get in the overflow where, before overtopping the entirety of that driveway. It's not coming up with the whole width, essentially.
Okay.
It's partially flooding it, but again, this is a secondary overflow, not the primary.
Okay. Just once, I just want to get the notes down.
Take it down.
Is that, to the two engineers at the table, what do you think about that response?
It, it, there are two overflows, I agree. And. So, yeah, maybe, maybe it is okay that it overflows the roadway a little bit. But, you know, I would prefer the second overflow to be lower than the roadway so it doesn't, especially if you don't need to meet peak rates. I just don't see what's the point of having it that high if you. But.
We can take a saw to it if you want.
Okay, so I need to make an additional comment that I didn't make earlier. Point of this work is environmental integrity ultimately, right? And my concern is that if we were to pursue marginal, marginally good alterations, you know, going, removing the pipe, et cetera, that it may cause more degradation than it's worth. That it may be undermining the fundamental purpose in the first place. I'm reluctant to see heavy machinery and equipment go back out there if possible. If we can avoid it, I'd prefer to avoid that because just the bringing of the equipment itself will do, will contribute or can contribute to degradation. That doesn't mean I'm not, I'm opposed to any other improvements or changes. It's just that we have to weigh out the value of the change versus the impact of making that change and come up with an adult answer, like, what really makes sense here environmentally? So, in this case, with the secondary overflow pipe, it would have been better if it were lower. However, I do fear that does work on that secondary pipe create more trouble than it's actually worth, especially if it's not critical, you know? Because at the end of the day, again, we just want to get to a point where you and Dan feel this stormwater system's going to work. Please do, Jeff.
So, my understanding, we're discussing a basin which is not actually an infiltration basin because you're not taking infiltration credits for it? We're talking about a basin that when it reaches the 100-year storm level, we assume we will, it will, it will partially overwhelm the road. I see one season where that's a bad, that's a problem. Okay, there's a period of time during the year where should we get snow, rain, whatever? You know, we get a lot less snow now and a lot more rain, and we have a situation where the road itself may become partially impassable safely for a public safety vehicle. I got, is this an H, is this an HPE pipe? What's the, yeah, so this is an eight-inch piece of white pipe. It's a sawzall. So, I hate to, I'm not belittling it. It's not just a sawzall, you know, okay? But it's a type of thing where if it made sense to get out there with a transit quickly and just take a look at the height of that pipe.
Okay.
And say, okay, take a laser line across it. And since it's an HPE pipe, if it has to be collared again in the future, it's not going to be a lot of work.
Okay, I misunderstood in my mind.
You were thinking of the large.
Yes, I was thinking of a horizontal pipe and that was put, no, 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 it's a vertical pipe.
This is sticking up, so when water comes in, it goes down and is directed at a faster rate.
Yeah.
Is it a big deal to cut it?
It's not a big deal. But I just want to add that it is set at that particular elevation because it is the crown of the primary overflow pipe. So, it's serving a purpose of having that primary pipe inundated first, and then it goes into the secondary.
Oh, I get it. Okay, all right.
It's handling a higher rate of inundation.
Yep.
That's all.
That makes sense. So, it's a total project to review. It's a lot of, a lot of constraints, a lot of atypical design.
Lot of stuff.
Features, so it took us a lot of time to even understand what was on paper.
Got it.
Actually, it's a confusing project.
We picked it up on the walkthrough the other day. Why is the, you just explained why that pipe is higher than the crown of the road.
So, okay, thank you.
I believe Nick had mentioned during the sidewalk too, but that's the end of it there.
What else, Jim, do we have related to stormwater?
Okay, let's see.
It's a design solution for a bad situation.
So. The has constructed.
Here's one comment I had, so I know Jim talked a lot.
I apologize, I should have asked you before I asked you.
So, Jim made a lot of comments about the calculations and just how they were actually prepared. There's a lot of atypical aspects to the design. So, it's actually a hard thing to model. I've done the hydrocat modeling before. It's not a fun thing to review or, or prepare the calc's for. So, I just wanted to make sure, so that was actually a part of this modified site plan. Is that, is that correct? Were those prepared as part?
Yes, it's accounted for in the modified stormwater calculations.
Gotcha. And there was some comments in there that, was Nick acknowledged, would be revised?
Yes.
So, we would get it revised?
Absolutely. The goal of this response letter was essentially saying that, you know, we'll make these revisions as long as you're okay with these revisions. We'd like to get an approval and move on from there.
So, if those are revised, you take care of Jim's comments, and you're still meeting all the stormwater critical goals, then obviously it's a hard thing for me. You can't measure it in the field, it's such a large site. But that's, that's really the biggest piece for us to be confident. And obviously, going back to the long-term control plan, we would, we would enforce the maintenance each and every year just to make sure those basins, critical pieces are actually maintained and functioning as designed, so.
So, I think those were the major ones that we had for stormwater. And then the rest of them, like Matt was saying, were the calc's, the hydrocat calc's, which they said that they would, they would update based on our comments.
Does that, does that resolve the hydrocat issue? So, the agreement is that GPR will recalculate?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just making, I'm sorry, I just, I don't have a town planner, so I'm acting as the note taker as well. So, with the conclusion, with the calculations and GPR will, was it resubmit or submit? Resubmit?
We'll submit.
We'll submit. Okay, great. So, from my mind, then, with the stormwater system issue is.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Submitted calculations, does DPW want third party to take a look at the submitted calculations or not? Is that going to be part of the process?
I'm comfortable with just Green International.
Yeah, me too.
That's what I mean, yeah, that's green. So, I want green, the question is, should Green remain in the loop? Yes or no?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So.
It's a, it's a process question.
So, I think that with stormwater, I think we're at a spot where as long as Dan and Matt feel the system's going to work, I think we're good. It looks, sounds like we're making progress there. Okay.
Really got a last, it's hard, you can't measure in the fields really the numbers. It's the model that says, it's the best information available to say that the stormwater, there's less water running outside than there was before.
Can I ask for a timeframe on that, on those calc's?
We, well, I believe we can try to get it to the middle of next week.
Middle of next, middle of?
Essentially done, but Nick, our chief engineer, has to review them and stamp them. He's away this week, so we'll hit him with them as soon as he gets back in. And if he's not too grumpy, we can probably get him to review it.
Even if he is grumpy, give it to him anyway.
How could you tell?
Yeah, right.
How could you tell?
It's tough to tell sometimes.
Any other comments regarding stormwater? No?
Just the last, very last thing that I personally did not see. I haven't seen the standing water in the basins. This is just a comment for the design engineer. So, I know the basins are supposed to drain over time, usually three-day period, if I'm correct.
Yeah, 72 hours, yep.
I'm not sure if GPRs, I've just heard from others. I haven't personally seen with my own eyes any issues with draining, what that could be.
I can answer that. So, as mentioned before, obviously, there are some fine particles due to construction that have been clogging up, the leaves from the trees. You know, obviously, it's clogging up the basin. We have seen that it was not draining within 72 hours. Rohit has taken steps to actually excavate it, de-water, as well as line the main basin, the eastern basin with gravel so that there's, you know, there's a chance for the water to get into the ground. I think he just mentioned that it was done for the west basin.
It had the rock in, it just scratched it.
Okay.
It just removed the leaves that scratched and it's all drained out.
Okay. So, it was, we did notice it and it was addressed during the, you know, multiple sidewalks that we had basically since about, I want to say, two, three months ago. So, we do believe that it's at a point that, you know, a lot of these construction debris as well as the leaves, they're all been excavated. The surface has been scratched, so it should operate like it was designed.
That's, that's my biggest concern. So, we'll be checking in here and there, DPW. And if we still have this concern while you're still on the project, we're definitely going to. We just want to be 100% sure because that's the key piece.
Hate to say it, prefer ring.
Okay.
We could use it.
So, okay, good. I want to go to the next big issue. And Jim, this is, I think this is regarding erosion control of the slope. I believe that's from the road itself. Is that what we're discussing? And Heather, please contribute if you, to clarify my understanding of this issue.
What's coming?
Jim, there's, I think it's the, I don't know what the compass direction is, but.
So, can I ask a favor? If we're entering the site from Washington Street.
Entering from Washington.
We're heading in towards the array in the back.
Correct.
Can we refer to the left-hand side as a downhill side?
Yes.
Does that work for us for this conversation?
Downhill side.
Now, using those directions, can we discuss which part of the road we're talking about? Of the slope?
Is that fair? Did you, you had some, didn't you have comments about the slope of the, that slope of the side of the road? And it's buttressing by?
The boulder reinforcement.
Is that the same issue? Am I getting confused, am I confused? That's the issue, right, with the boulders? Yep. So, can you, Jim, if you could just tell us what you're, share your concerns and let's have the conversation now.
Yeah, so, we didn't see any detail for any kind of engineered design for the, for the boulder slope that's called out here.
Is this number eight?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good, great. And when we were out on site, you know, it's, it's hard to tell how it was installed exactly, especially because it doesn't have a detail. But it kind of looked like it was just kind of, you know, placed there instead of, you know, actually kind of had some sort. of, you know, placed there instead of, you know, actually kind of had some sort of detail and design, and it is a steep slope, so we do have concerns about, you know, the slope's stability there, you know?
I guess my only comment to that is I would like to kind of get to the location where instability occurs, because during the sidewalk, you know, we've been out there multiple times, we have seen grass grown on the side of the slope. As far as the detail for the reinforcement, there's nothing that we can provide. Obviously, you know, truthfully, it is a bunch of boulders stacked on top of each other at an angle and compacted in a way that is able to hold up the driveway. Again, we haven't...
The weight of a fire truck going over it, perhaps?
Well, you wouldn't...the boulder's on the other side of the guardrail, so certainly on the paved part of the driveway, it's not going to be an issue.
Because I'm an engineer, I'm just wondering if pressure on the road in general could push out, would put pressure laterally toward the boulders, and if the boulders are going to hold, that's not a mess.
I believe multiples construction vehicles have gone over, you know, this paved portion of the driveway. Haven't seen any sort of erosion damage or any sort of kickout from underneath the boulder.
And if I could make a comment too. So, when it was constructed, when that driveway was constructed, fill was placed, and we actually did have compaction testing done on the roadway itself. So, the roadway is stable and has been well-compacted, and it's self-supporting. So, the real issue was the slope going down, and we had an issue where there was a drop-off on the pavement at the edge of the...at the edge of where they had paved, and there was kind of a drop there that was then...there was like a flat area and then dropping down the slope, so that's where the landscaper came in and placed boulders along that so that we could backfill the edge of the pavement, whereas what you see, that two to three feet of compacted, and I think it's a dense-grated base that was placed and compacted in there to buttress the edge of the pavement, and those boulders are built it up high enough so that it could provide that buttressing for the edge of the pavement. So, it's really not...it's not supporting the roadway per se.
Okay.
It's supporting the fill between the edge of the pavement and where the level area to provide a shoulder there, and that's really the intent, just to provide that shoulder.
Understood.
Yeah, Matt and then Jim, if you want to comment on that.
Sure. I understand, obviously, it was supposed to be a retaining wall when the driveway was proposed to be 18 feet. Obviously, that's changed, there's a longer need for it, and hence possibly not a need for retaining walls as proposed. So, I guess normally for a project where you have a road and you have a steep, I think it's a one and a half to one slope, you would have some sort of, I guess, design consideration just for that slope, and this kind of seemed like to us, like, as you mentioned, it was kind of done after the fact, so you're the engineer record, you just want to make sure you consider that detail, you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, I think we were watching when they put it in, and we were making sure that they applied the proper compaction. Plus, we checked, you know, we've got reports from the, I think it was Yankee testing, the compaction testing for the road itself, because that was our primary concern, is that roadway had to be compacted when it was placed, so that it was placed properly and it was able to support the construction vehicles going in and out here. The boulders on the side were really an afterthought to try and...because of the way they paved and left that kind of exposed there, and it couldn't stay the way it was. That had to be fixed, which is why the boulder wall came in, and Sidney did a really nice job of placing those boulders and tamping them down as best he could, and then placing that dense-grated base between them, so we're pretty happy with the way that came out. But you're right, it was after the fact, it was as a result of the field condition that had to be remedied.
So, let me ask the engineers this. Is that at risk? Is there a risk of that deteriorating or being insufficiently supportive? I mean, do you see a risk here, and if so, how high is that? How great a risk?
I guess the first thing that Cal was saying was the compaction. Obviously, there's a lot of fill area, so...this wasn't cut at all, this is all filled for the road. Am I correct on that? So, obviously, compaction. I personally wasn't out there. If you have compaction reports, that would...that would make us comfortable, because that's probably the key.
Do you have them? Do you have the compaction reports?
I believe so. It was given to the building inspector.
But we can get them to you.
Okay.
So, that's probably the biggest concern.
Will you direct it to Matt, please?
Yeah, sure.
Just that. And obviously, even so with the compaction, just the erosion of the side slope, I saw there was some...I forget what it's called, it's like an erosion control blanket on the side.
Yeah, the mesh on the side.
Yeah, the mesh, yeah.
Right, so...
And that seems to be holding pretty well, and it's been...it's starting to grow with a fair amount of grass there now. We've never had any serious problem with erosion on this site. There's been minor little areas, but...and you're probably aware that your commission has a consideration commission, has an erosion control monitor out there weekly for the whole length of the project.
We got them, right?
Yeah, yeah, and so there's, you know, she's had minor things that she's wanted fixed, but there's never been a serious erosion issue out there at any point in time.
Jim, do you find it satisfactory on this issue?
Yeah, I agree with what Matt said. Yeah, and it's good to hear that they were on site while it was being installed, so that...
Okay.
Without...
Since we're on the topic of that access road, I think there are a couple other points you may have on your list. Is that true? And I think one of the things I wanted to discuss was this idea of another foot of width to the road, and my concern and issue is, is adding the foot worth it, given that it's going to mean having the heavy equipment out, et cetera, et cetera? Go ahead, Jeff.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. You want to expand the width of the road by a foot, or someone else would expand?
It's been a discussion item, what we've heard on the...on our sidewalks.
Somehow I missed that.
On the uphill side. Yes, on the uphill side, another foot that would come...that would actually push it into the rain box, the tree boxes. Thank you. And I just want to resolve, are we doing that or not? Pros, cons, and just decide whether this is something worth, that makes sense to do or just...if, again, if DPW, police, and fire are content with the road as safe for emergency vehicles and the occasional inspections, is it even worth doing that extra foot? And I'm open either way. I want to hear the arguments.
Mr. Chair, what prompted the...what was the rationale behind even the discussion of an additional foot?
Ask Cal.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
What was the rationale for the additional foot? I think to meet some requirement?
So, we wanted to say that we had a consistent 14-foot width for the whole length of the driveway, and they paved a 14-foot width. However, then they placed a 12-inch berm on top of the 14-foot width, which effectively reduced the width of the road, travel portion of the road to 13 feet, right? 13 feet. And so, we were talking about, and Sidney, when he was out there, built kind of a stone base for that additional width when the time comes, and the thinking was that if we paved again wider, that then we would also be able...because we still need to put the diagonal...
Yes, you do.
Bumps in there, which are going to direct the water to those tree box filters. So, if we did that at the same time as paving the additional width, we could also pave over the entrance to those tree box filters to have a seamless entry into the filter himself. That's not absolutely necessary, but I think it wouldn't be a bad thing to at least clean that up, clean that edge up.
I agree. Especially, it's kind of funny just with the original plan and then the modifications without the official site modification, and on the...some of the modified site plans are 14-foot width, so I think it's kind of be backwards for us to say, "No, let's change the modified site plan, you know, what you're proposing. Let's just...we need to go by that."
So, we'll go with that.
Yeah, that gives us the opportunity to address them.
So, you can do that?
It becomes a...
Yeah, we were...we were already finding out.
It's a cosmetic improve...it's a good cosmetic improvement.
You can do that the same...if I understand...if I understand you correctly, that extension of the foot and the creation of the...I don't know what you call those diagonal risers that direct water. That can be...that's part of the same process.
Same.
Okay, we'll do expand at same time as you're putting in the diagonals.
Actually, I think the contractor had said last fall that he couldn't put those diagonals in. It was too cold to form them and have it bond to the surface.
Yes, and I agree.
He was afraid that they'd just get knocked out if they had to bond.
Just add on to that comment, we're also planning to do the mountable curb and sidewalk at the front at the same time, essentially.
What's it called, mountable curb?
Yes.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, if you don't mind...
Yes, please.
It goes beyond cosmetic on those tree boxes. It will improve the integrity of the outer wall.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Those openings will be filled and covered, and you won't have the...
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that's the idea.
Okay. I just, on all the sidewalks, I hadn't heard that. I had the same question you had, Attorney Costa. What are we talking about? So, thanks.
Thank you.
So, the final road's going to be 14 feet wide?
Okay, that's fine. So, it'll be 14. So, I just want to turn back to Jim. What other issues concerning the integrity of the access road do you have on your list that we should address tonight?
I just wanted to hop back on the tree box. So, what are you doing exactly? You're paving over the top of the tree box to...
Just modifying it so that you've got the block here, and when the pavement meets to the edge so that it flows into the tree box filter, it doesn't drop into it before you get there.
Okay.
To try and clean that edge up and probably put some stone in there and bring that paving right up to it.
Okay.
And they've asked us to put caps on the top of all those blocks for the tree box filter, you know, like a, you know, it was inch and a half, half on all of those, so we'll do that, but that entrance one would probably not do it on that one so that it would flow into it.
So, it would be able to fill up within the tree box with the caps, and then it wouldn't leak out the sides because of the CMU anymore?
Right, that's the idea.
And then it would, yeah, high storm events, it would overflow into the overflow grate?
Right.
Okay, yep.
I'll just make one last comment on the tree box filters. So, that's, I believe that's part of the...taking credit for total suspended solids removal, so it's part of the stormwater management, it says something, a BMP that we would be looking at, making sure there's maintenance. So, I know it was...what was built was a little bit different than what was on both the original plan and the modified site plan, so I could say technically out, you know, based on the modified site plan, what's out there today doesn't meet what you're proposing once again, so I know the essence of time is to get this project done, to not make it more complicated than it needs to be, but really, from my standpoint, is you show it on paper one way, and it's actually in the field another way. Are you comfortable that that's going to hold up, the blocks versus the pre-cast structure? And if so...
Yeah, I can answer that.
Yep.
So, there's really no magic to the material used to construct the tree box filter? The whole point of the tree box filter is getting stormwater in and getting it to the sand media, the 30-inch of sand media that the water is traveling through. The idea is that the water is cleaning...is being cleaned, cleansed through the soil media and out the eight-inch perforated pipe that is sitting at the bottom and outlet further down gradient. So, there's really no magic to it, as long as the water's getting to the sand, that's it.
So, this is exactly an issue related to what I started with, that yes, we acknowledge that it doesn't conform to the site plan or the plan modifications. However, if it's good enough, I think it's better to not have to rip it up than to...
And if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Matt, thank you for coming to AR and working here. During one of our other sidewalks, we were going through iterations of plans, modified plans, plans, modified plans, and it became a task that was slowing the process down also. So, some...we don't know, I'm going to speak for my understanding of it, we will get a set of plans that will reflect how it's constructed.
Exactly.
Okay? We're going to, as Attorney Costa said at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to have to wait for those, but they'll happen. We won't have them before they finish, but I think that's what...one of the things that happened is because the site changes were fairly extensive, when the houses fell away and the road used need...the road used changed, that redesign it, redesign it, rebuild it, and they were still finding things in the field, that we were...we relaxed that, give us a set of plans before you build it request at that point. I wouldn't say we relaxed, we agreed that the best way to go forward is to have the plans fit, have the plans reflect what was done.
Agreed.
It's the wrong way, but COVID was an interesting experience for all of us.
This is just such a...it's probably one of the most complex plan reviews I've ever done, so it's...
Hold on, we got one coming! We got another one coming!
So, regarding road, the access road construction issues, anything else on your punch list, on your list, Jim, that we need to be attentive to this evening?
So, we did have some comments about the guardrail not meeting mass DOT standards.
Which number is that, sir?
Six and seven.
I'll start with number six. So, number six is addressing the guardrail that's traveling down from Washington Street to the end of the paved portion of the access drive. Obviously, we don't believe that this portion has to be mass DOT standard as it sits on our property.
Okay, I'm not...I don't know.
Excuse me again, Mr. Chair. This is the left-hand side of the driveway as you enter the property, going in towards the solar field. There's a guardrail on the left-hand side.
There's actually two guardrails. There's the guardrail on the street that comes into the site that's stainless steel or whatever, isn't it galvanized? Then there's the guardrail going down, and it's the rusted...
Yeah, okay.
So, the guardrail going into the site that's on our property is the rusted.
I'm handicapped by not being an authority on the law, where I don't know whether the MassDOT rules apply here or not, and I...do you have any insight, Jeff?
Well, I'm going to ask another question. It says, just for clarity, Jim, not to put you on the spot, but it doesn't meet mass DOT standards. Doesn't need...doesn't meet the standards in height? Doesn't meet the standards in what...how it's constructed? Doesn't meet the standards in it won't hold back collision and stuff like that? It doesn't meet mass DOT standards? Missing on a lot, or is missing on some?
So, I'm not actually the transportation engineer Thomas, but I believe what he was saying was that it didn't have...usually, there's like a specific like bench where you have the guardrail. So, you have the guardrail, and then you have a bench before it goes down the slope.
Got it.
And it didn't have...
So, it's how it's installed, is the issue? Not the guardrail itself, but the installation of the guardrail?
Yeah, that's installed. And then the other one is the end treatment, which is, you know, like the end of the guardrail. So, you know, these are...usually, when you install a guardrail, you would install it per...
And may I ask, is this a corrugated metal guardrail? Missing the turns on the end?
No, it's got the turns in there.
Okay, so I would double check. Yeah, okay. And it's set in the ground on ivy, basically? Steel ivy beams?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can offer a perspective on the legality, I don't disagree with the comment, and I wouldn't have expected Green International to apply any other standard. In fact, they're relying, all these comments are relying upon your subdivision rules and regulations, which is somewhat inconsistent with what we're actually doing here, because we're proposing a private driveway access roadway, but we're relying upon standards within the subdivision rules and regulations. That'd be fair if it were a common driveway. It's not a common driveway, but again, you got to start somewhere, you have to look But again, I, you gotta start somewhere, you have to look to some standard. Generally, typically speaking legally, mass DOT standards don't even apply to town roads. They apply to mastod roads, they apply to state highways. Most communities have adopted through their subdivision rules and regulations, an incorporation by reference of mastod standards. So when you build townways, you have to comply with mastod standards. You wouldn't require mastod standards for a driveway to my house that happens to be situated 400 feet off the road.
Okay.
Um, so it's really a judgment call for this board, but that's, that's the legal answer to the question as to whether mastod standards strictly apply.
Excuse me, one more.
Go ahead, please.
I want to turn it to Matt. What do you think about the guardrail? I mean, is this, is this a critical issue? Should, is it, is it good enough or do we need to, does it need work?
Just going back to the, I guess, legality of it. And I guess at one point in time, this did, this project, excuse me, the subdivision rules and regulations applied to this project when future A and R lots were being considered, this being a potential common driveway with proposed water main and sewer main underneath the road and 18-foot wide driveway, which is the minimum width for a common driveway. So, uh, whether or not that was explicitly stated in any of the application packages, that would, the intent was for this to be a common driveway. But obviously now that's been abandoned, this is one lot for the solar array and access to it. So, um, we went through this, uh, internally in with Town Council and, uh, we, we don't believe the subdivision rules and regulations apply now.
Okay.
They did before, but they do not now. So the mastod, you're right, it could have been, I'm not a hundred percent sure if that's referenced in the subdivision rules and regulations. That's pretty common. But it would be hard for us to apply that criteria now.
So let me just put, simply put to my colleagues on the board, can we leave with the guardrail as is?
I would like to say, if I may, the guardrail provides, as it is right now, a very good visual aid to getting in and out of that property safely. It's, it would be hard, I can't imagine that guardrail would be put in a position like the guardrail on Washington Street where an automobile is going by it anywhere from 25 to 45 miles an hour, loses control and it has to be kept on the road.
Right.
This is an access road to a solar field that very promptly becomes unpaved surface. It is downhill, so in my mind, and I'm not the engineer, if somebody were to have trouble going down that hill, the guardrail would probably keep them there. But it visually, it helps a heck of a lot getting in and out of the property.
Because again, what I recognize is that the only vehicles that should be on that road are authorized inspection vehicles or someone from, you know, you know, someone who has an authority or in an emergency and that's it. It's not for any other kind of traffic, is that correct?
If our fire department says it's fine, yeah.
That's, that was gonna be my comment.
Yeah.
The DPW's not gonna be on there other than occasionally just to check out the BMPs.
If it's okay by fire, it's okay by us.
Yeah.
Have we already received that comment from them or I can run that by them?
I don't think they commented on the guardrail, they commented on the access road itself, which it seems like they're, you know, they used with it. And I know they have the turnaround, so that's.
And I know the applicant actually went to a great extent to make public safety, public safety to meet their needs. So I think it's a quick question, honestly.
All right, so I will follow with fire on that. Jim, what else do we have regarding the road?
You want to go to number seven?
Well, I thought we were on, I thought we did six and seven together.
Number seven is the guardrail north side of the drive.
Same analysis.
That's not our.
It's the same issue, right?
That's not our guardrail.
Well, existing guardrail, it's not ours to address. Yeah, so let's, uh.
It's your guardrail.
It's our guardrail, so let's leave alone.
I think we should stop traffic on the road and make the town fix it.
All right. What else regarding the road, Jim?
We're narrowing them down, narrowing them down. So I think this might be kind of the last comment, I was just referring to the retaining wall.
Which number, Jim?
Number 22. So there is a retaining wall, you know, there's no details. It was our understanding that there was a GeoGrid wall. And, um, you know, we requested details for the proposed wall and ensured that it meets manufacturer recommendations. And, uh, confirmed the height of the wall is to not exceed five feet. But I think that was per the subdivision regs. I guess we just want to know, you know, do you feel comfortable with that wall? And was it kind of installed per manufacturer?
So, so we actually do because, um, the original contractor had put it in. We had Sydney came in and made repairs to the wall and improved it considerably and put in a new section of wall. But we have a structural engineer that designed that wall and got building permit with his structural plans. And he, uh, observed the wall and observed its installation and signed off on it. So we actually have a structural engineers, uh, okay on that wall, so we should be fine with that.
Okay.
May I ask, may I make a request that you include the detail for that wall? It's that final set of plans? The construction cut sheet detail? Thank you.
Make a note of that, yeah.
I'm just writing this down again.
Jim and I are structural engineers, so that's not something that we would stamp on. So if a structural engineer stamped this and approved of it, the actual failure conditions, that's, that, that's what trumps.
And a portion of the comment says, plan referred to it, plan reference for.
So are we.
Couldn't find it on the plan.
That's why we got the structural guy.
Yeah, so, so I'm just saying, the, the other part of the comment is couldn't find it on the plans, let's put it on the plans, guys.
Yeah.
Is that it for the road, Jim?
Yeah, I think that, that covers our main concerns.
How's everyone doing? Is there a, a need for a, a break? Now's the time to speak up. Okay, let's continue. I'm going to ask Heather to step up to the table if that's okay. If you can make, help her out and make room at the corner there for her. And that's, I want to talk about this issue of the stream crossing erosion control because I'm not fully, I'm not fully sure what the issues are. Uh, in the absence of our, of our town planer, Heather has really been, uh, even though she's the agent for conservation, she's been our eyes. And this was an issue that she brought to our attention. And so let's, I don't know if this came up in your report as well and what number that corresponds to. But if you, Heather, if you could then talk to a little bit about what this, what the issue is here with the erosion?
Yeah, I just also made the comment as well that, um, the majority of the project is in with the conservation jurisdiction minus the solar array. So it's not just me on site reviewing it for the planning board, I'm actually doing it as a conservation commission and informing the planning board of what's on site. My concern with the stream crossing is, there's two items. There's a amount of scoring that's happened at the outlet of that crossing that needs to be addressed and.
On the downhill side?
Yeah, on the outlet, um, along with, um, amount of sediment that has settled from the, over the, from over the winter. Now that the site's been dry the last few, two weeks, we've been able to see it on site that needs to be cleaned up. The question I have in regards to the actual crossing is on the detail sheet. And unfortunately, I don't have the plans in front of me, I had all these notes from before and it's been stated to the applicant during the conservation meetings. The detail of the stream crossing is on the plans. I'm not fully understanding where that goes on the plans. Does it go inside the, the street, inside the culvert, underneath the crossing? Is it on the inlet side, coming out of the box culvert where all the rock is? That is something that needs to be cleared up and addressed and the commission may have further comments on that when we meet with them again next week.
I don't understand that comment.
So on your plans, um, thank you, the, there's a detail sheet for the stream crossing. So it's sheet number, and I'm just reviewing the plans that were submitted for the project as amended. Sheet C4.6 has stream bank notes, um, with details on bank restoration, stating whatever's going to be planted there. I just want to know if that's going inside, if it's going outside, because what's on site now is those logs and it's straight. These plans show it at an angle and I just want to verify if that's going inside or outside.
It's going to be outside, outside, you're not going to get growth inside.
So right now it's all rock. So I just, this is, these are the questions I have. Unfortunately, coming into the, um, I wasn't part of the application, the processing permitting process. I only can view what the plans that were submitted and that's where my questions come from.
And we're talking about the rock at the outlet?
At the inlet.
At the inlet itself.
I think that's what she's asking.
I'm just asking where this detail is going. And I, if it's not, if it's on the plans, it should be on site, if not, I don't know why it's there. You were submitted revised plans for what's either on site or going to be. If it's not going to be there, it shouldn't be on the plans.
Okay, so what this is, um, my estimation is you've got the culvert coming out, there was scour. That's been filled with some, with some stone. But then you've got a section of stream that we're trying to recreate to get it to the stream bed that's straight in front of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Because right now it comes in, we've got, we've got silt fence and we've got hay bales stopping it. So the water comes in and it spreads along the toe of the, the wall, which there's, there's a lot of growth along the toe of the wall. So we really don't want to do anything with that. We just want to let the stuff grow and the wetlands are going to work their way in when we take out that silt fence and hay bales. But there's like, I don't know, eight feet, 10 feet section to get from the outlet, to get to the beginning of the existing stream bed on the other side of the erosion control. And this is intended to form that channel to get that, that stream to flow in its path the way it was supposed to, instead of just spreading out along the wall.
So that spreading is temporary as a consequence of the silt fence?
Of the silt fence. And when that silt fence can be taken out and the hay bales can be taken out, we can place this in. And then it shows kind of a berm on the backside of it.
Okay.
So I'd actually say, put those poor logs in there, maybe build up on each side of it along the toe of the wall and plant that or let wetland plants grow naturally into that area, which will happen in a heartbeat. And this will then direct the stream bed straight ahead. And it will, it will scour, you know, which stream beds do. It's going to scour, it's going to create sediment, there'll be, you know, streams have a sediment budget and this stream hasn't seen water in, in quite a while. So it needs to get that, that water flow going, but that's what this is going to do. It's not intended to be inside the culvert because you won't get anything.
All right, that's reviewing the plan that doesn't appear that that's what this says. Um, so if I'm incorrect, it needs to be taken out because it does say coralog, bank, restoration.
There is a coralog under the culvert as well.
I understand that. So then what is this detail that I'm seeing above it? What is that detail? Where is that going? Yes.
From the end of the culvert to the beginning of the old stream bed on the other side of the hay bales and silt fence.
So that's.
If I understand you, Calvin, that's not been installed yet because you say hay bales and silt fence.
It's still there, you couldn't put it there.
But that's not a stream bank, that's the outlet. So when I head, I hear stream bank, that's the actual coming in. And again, this is at an angle, it's not flat. What comes out is flat, this is at an angle showing going up.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's shown that way, but it's not, there isn't a steep slope above it, so it's not going to be on an angle, it's going to be flat.
Okay, I, so again, again, this is just my confusion of plans that have details that are unclear to me, um, that needs to be clarified.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
This is a typical detail that was submitted. We can certainly remove it if Heather feels that it's not no longer needed. We obviously know what the goal is or what we need to, we need to do in terms of the stream crossing itself. We have to give the silt fence and hay bale.
Okay, so if I, if, if you don't mind, Limhut. So my understanding is that this detail is something to be fulfilled at the very end after we move the silt fence because obviously you can't build it now until the.
And, and to address the slope behind it, it says, it shows it going up on an angle.
Okay.
And it says two to one max.
Okay.
So what that detail is showing is it can be flat or it can be sloped up, but no higher than a two, no steeper than two to one. So it's not requiring that it go up in the air, it's saying, you know, like, like engineering details typically do. They'll tell you what the maximum slope can be above it. And that's all this is saying is it's a two to one max. But it's a stream bank to get you from the end of the culvert to the beginning of the stream channel that, because it used to flow straight through.
Right.
And practically speaking, on this site, it's not going to be at a two to one, it's going to be virtually flat.
It's going to be virtually flat, but it will be built up, so I, that's what I'm saying, build up behind it. And then that, whatever loam you put in will cover whatever stone is there. Now we put four to six inches of loam in there and then let the wetland plants take over. It's still doing a hurry.
So again, I would, I wouldn't make any comments or statements until it goes to, the conservation commission obviously has the right to make their comments too.
I mean, this is a design plan that we've.
So I'm just, I'm just letting you know that these comments that I have tonight will most likely, again, may come up during the conservation commission. Okay, that's all I'm saying.
We'll explain it to them as well, but that's just the standard detail.
So, uh, Matt, does that sound reasonable to you?
I mean, it makes sense generally speaking. I, I personally don't remember that part of the site. I'd like to go out there and just take a look with you, Heather, just, 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 just to see with my own eyes.
Yeah, I, I want to do that too. I want to just peek, because I'm a little confused, I'm, I'm trying, I think, I, I got a general sense of what you're talking about. I, I do want to take a peek, but it does sound, from what I've heard, that.
I need to verify the stream crossing standards as well.
What's that?
I need to verify the stream crossing standards as well to make sure that this site meets those.
Okay, but in terms of the erosion control, what I'm hearing is that there is something sensible in place that's appropriate for the site and that one of the reasons we're seeing that water spread is precisely because the silt fence is there.
At the outlet, correct.
Okay.
Nothing to do, I'm not talking about the actual crossing or the inlet, I'm talking about the outlet and that's, yes.
The outlet.
That sediment that has happened is because of those, the erosion control doing exactly what it's supposed to by not allowing the sediment to go into the wetlands.
Perfect, okay, good. Any other issues related to the stream crossing erosion control? Or have we got to a good place, at least for planning? I understand conservation commission may have some further, but for us, we in a good place? Looking at my team?
Oh, yes.
All right. Any further from you on the erosion control issues at all or, or the stream crossing or the culvert? And as long as we're on the topic, is there any further comments from your report, Jim?
I don't think we had specific ones for that.
Well, what are the plans for building the turtle nesting area? This is not a, you know, not saying this contentiously, I'm just saying, just remind me if you told me before.
It's been installed.
It's been installed?
Yes.
Oh, so what needs to happen next? Does it have to be inspected by the mass, uh, what was it, natural?
Scott, Scott from Oxbow was out there.
Oh, he was?
He directed the planting of the grasses that he wanted. And we had actually bought more than he had asked for, so he, um, he directed and told Cliff where to plant, laid him out.
Directed by, it was a Scott at Oxbow?
Scott at Oxbow, yeah.
That was required, I think it was by the order of conditions.
Yeah, there was an order, yeah, I'm.
So it's done.
So, so you comply with the order of conditions.
And when you go out there, you'll notice it's not a steep slope, it's actually raised up flatter and that was at his direction. He wanted that to be a little flatter and he wanted a slope on the side of it, uh, which has been stabilized. And then he also shortened it up a little bit, he didn't want it going as far up as he did. So he basically directed us to, directed Cliff to build it exactly the way he wanted it. And then he put the plantings in where he wanted them. And believe me, when you go look at it, it's sparse. There's a stalk here and there's a stalk over there, there's a stalk over there, but I guess that grass was spread.
Okay.
He just didn't, he didn't want it, I think, to be overwhelming on, because the turtles don't like to fight through that, but they like it for cover, I guess, so.
Okay, good.
He's the expert, he, we did what he told us to do on that, so that's been construed.
Okay.
And that, well, Thursday night, you'll have that conversation with conservation too.
I'm quite sure.
Okay, good. So another, next thing on my bullet list was about the surety and we've already discussed that. I'm just going to check with, with Dan and, and make sure that DPW is, is content with the surety as originally implemented since the plans have changed and ask if there's any, if there's any discrepancy, that'll be a, a issue of further, uh, negotiation with you. Under, that's understood, we're good with that? Okay, good.
That's a follow, I was looking for.
A follow-up?
Surety, I, I couldn't find that in my files, so that's something I'd like to.
Yeah, we need to follow up on that.
See that, that's, that's.
Okay.
So, so we have obviously the original and then the amended decision. We have a copy of the surety, so we can provide that. And we can obviously discuss what needs to be discussed at the next session of the public hearing.
Yes, and would you mind, I'm, I'm very sorry, but resend the, the surety part for.
Happy to do that.
No, I'd like to see a CC me on that so that I can just take a look at that, thank you.
Sure.
So, yes, please.
Are we talking about a surety to complete the project? Or a surety that if the project fails in some way, there's a way to recover?
I was thinking the latter.
Okay, is that the same topic?
Are we talking the same thing, Mr. Costa?
Well, I'm not sure we are. So I mean, we, we talked, we talked about multiple different sureties over multiple different meetings, both with the original approval and then with the amendment. Uh, we talked about the obvious surety with any project of the sort for decommissioning. And we made a commitment to, I believe it was a tiered surety for decommissioning. Uh, we talked about the need for surety during the construction phase to be sure that the project was constructed as approved and that that, that surety would behold for, held for a period of time until such time as there was an assurance to, to the town satisfaction that the, the, uh, project was functioning as it was supposed to. We had had a lengthy discussion about the need for surety with respect to the actual functioning of the driveway, roadway. And the conclusion was that, you know, this is very different and I appreciate, again, as someone who represents planning boards, I appreciate it. I negotiate covenants, I negotiate all forms of surety with traditional subdivisions. It's a necessity, those subdivision roadways are serving residential homes, multiple residential homes. Often those roadways are eventually accepted by the town as public ways. You know, this is very different. This is an access road that as you yourself pointed out, it's going to be utilized by the occasional individuals who are provide, performing maintenance or inspection of the facility. And, you know, let's hope not, but by emergency personnel in the event that there's a, a danger to public safety.
My concern with that, that last one, that functioning surety is not about the road, it's about the storm water. That's my concern, that that doesn't blow out. That's my big issue, concern.
Okay, storm water.
The system, the functioning of the storm water system.
To, but, but to what end? So the, the storm water system is meant to function to preserve the viability of the site, right? To ensure that the project itself, the solar array isn't overwhelmed, although based upon the grade of the site, that's unlikely to occur. Um, and to be sure that the driveway actually functions to provide access. I guess that there's a, there's a.
We also don't want erosion that could compromise the wetland, right? Adjacent to it, I think that, that's my concern.
Well, understood, and you've got an order of conditions for that purpose and you've got several conditions of your approval. I guess it's just, it's an unusual conversation to have because virtually with every private project, there's a concern. Every project particularly that's within wetland resource areas, subject to conservation commission jurisdiction, there's a concern that if things go really bad. go really bad, the wetlands could be compromised. But there's no justification in law for every one of those projects for planning boards or conservation commissions to require, you know, sureties, performance bonds, for an indefinite period of time once the project is completed. It's, it, there's often a concern during the construction phase that you're not gonna do things correctly. It's never gonna function the way it's supposed to. We need to be sure you do it right, and if you get up and leave when it's halfway constructed, we can finish it to be sure that the neighbors are protected, the town's protected, public roadways are protected. It's a little different to say, we have a concern that in perpetuity, five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, this site might not function the way we want it to. I mean, that's a concern with every project of any type. So it's, it's, and it's a significant financial burden. I've had to deal with it in, in working with banks and other lenders, trying to convince them as to why you've got this, well, we have to provide a perpetual surety in this amount just in case the worst case scenario occurs, which is always a risk. So again, we're happy to have the conversation, but I, I do have a concern about this idea of some.
I appreciate your concerns. I, I'm not in the position now to give you a definitive response because, you know, I just don't have the expertise. So I'm gonna, I'll let you in a second. So I think this is gonna be, let me look into this a little further and, and get some clarification and we can have, we can discuss.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, I won't say this very often in public, but Attorney Costa makes some very good points. But as you also may recall, when we were discussing this project in the first and the resubmitted phase, this was the, the crux of the matter. What would the surety cover and what wouldn't it cover? I honestly can't remember. Haven't looked at it for many years.
Let's check that.
I think we need to look at it and see, and see exactly what it covered and.
Well, I'm, I'm happy for the convenience of the board to provide copies of those decisions, copies of the surety I do have, because there was a covenant that was signed.
Exactly.
So I have a copy of that, and I'll provide that information, then we can resume the conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm gonna ask for forgiveness if I'm stating the obvious, but I just wanna be sure that as part of the project completion, that means cleaning up the perimeter, removal of the silt fence, the hay bales, et cetera, that's, that's, that's understood as part of completion?
Yeah. It's gotta be authorized by Conservation Commission, but yeah.
And, and authorized.
They have to wait until they get authorization for it.
Good. Excellent. That's resolved. And then the, I know that we, as you said earlier, you couldn't put those diagonal water bumps in because the, the temperature was not appropriate, and that's gonna be started, that's part of the, already on your punch list, the work with that extension of the foot and, you know, as you said, the correct direction of the water from the, from the road into the tree boxes, right?
Yeah, that, that and the, the stream channel formation for that last 10 feet, those are really about the only two things I can think of that we have left to do out there, right?
All right. Good. So that said, I wanna, so those are the biggest issues that I had and I had in conversation with my colleagues. I wanna say to Jim, you know, you've heard us talk about all these things. Are there anything else remaining on your list that you think you would like to draw our attention to? That haven't been resolved yet that you feel are critical or important to, to resolve?
Yeah, I think, I think we touched on all the, all the critical ones.
All the critical things?
Yep.
Okay. Then let's talk about next steps, right? To get this done. What do we need to do here? What goes on now? Now what happens next?
So, so I, I'll, I'll lead, I guess. So I've been taking notes as we've gone through the various line items, and I think for the most part, the answers were that we came to some resolution through, through discussion. There were a few outstanding that required some input from various town departments. So we were waiting for confirmation from DPW, although maybe you got it from your town engineer regarding item 27, which was the grading for the West Basin. Not sure if you're satisfied. That was just before, what's your name, sir? Matt, just before Matt joined, joined us at the table, so I don't know if that's been satisfied now.
So what, where I have it on my notes is I'm just gonna double check with, that's on my list, to double check with Dan, as is the issue of the hydroCAD calculations.
That was the next one.
So that was the two that I had to direct the DPW and confirm their comfort. And the other thing on my punch list is, again, with the surety, just check, you know, get the documents from you and just check with everybody in Town Hall. Are we good with the surety? Are we appropriately covered? Is there anything else that needs to be discussed with that? So those are my three big punch list items. Does that match yours, Adam?
It, it does. I have, we're gonna submit to you specifically to Matt, compaction reports.
The compaction reports, I have that. And the, and one other thing was to just check with fire with the guardrail.
On the guardrail. That was my next one.
So we have the same list?
We do.
And if I, the new, the new hydroCAD computations will be submitted.
Both to Matt and to Green International, correct?
Exactly. That, that's on the list also.
Right.
Okay. Great.
And obviously, we have to continue our proceedings with Conservation Commission. To some extent, ConCon was waiting to see how we progressed with you and waiting on Green International's feedback, so.
Probably have to come back before us again too, won't you?
Yes.
All right. So we've actually, I think, made a considerable amount of progress this evening. We have a punch list really of four items, and they're very pointed and specific, not obscure and legalistic. They're very direct and practical. So forgive my own ignorance. So then the as-built plans, does that come at the absolute conclusion when the, all the work is done and then those are what we sign, the work is done? And then my, my question is, what's your, what are you thinking about timeframe and completion of the work?
Also, if the hydroCAD is completed and works, then I'm basically just doing the two things that we just talked about.
Right. What do you, what's your timeframe for that two things?
We would like to try to do the asphalt, the last component of it. So realistically, if we need to do some additional heavy equipment going in for that little channel that we just talked about.
Yeah.
Then that would be first and then go from there. So I don't know if we can break away the, we have to talk to ConCon about breaking away that area, correct?
Right.
So that will have to be decided first, and then we'll go on the asphalt. So I'm hoping in a month that this will be completed.
I was gonna say a month, six weeks, I would think.
Okay.
It sounds to me like it's a process. It's gonna be scheduling the asphalt contractor out there.
Okay.
It's a relatively small job, but it's, it requires somebody else, not us.
That feels good. And then from us on our part, what is it we literally specifically need to do at this point? What do you need from us?
So, an approval ultimately. But I don't, it doesn't sound like we're there yet tonight. So I don't know that we need anything immediately. I think we have the feedback we need. We need.
An ass when we start working on draft condition.
I think that'd be helpful to, to, to see a draft decision with conditions so that we can review that and be prepared to discuss it substantively.
So I'm, so what's the order of the draft decision of conditions comes first?
Draft decision with conditions. And that's, our timing may be as drawn out as your timing, if I may speak on your behalf.
Please go ahead.
We don't have a town planner right now, so we're gonna have to figure that.
So I'm gonna make an offer that we used to do all the time in Harvard where other towns don't have town planners, is do you want us to put together a draft decision to give to you that you can work from and modify as you want? Would that be helpful?
I would prefer to consult with the town manager. We may be able to get some time from our incoming town planner to help us on this, and I would prefer to do that.
Okay, well, the offer's there.
Thank you for the offer.
So what we need to do, so on our, our plate, our plate is the draft decision of conditions. I would assume then that it's not necessary for you to come before us in our next meeting, planning meeting, right? I mean, it, it, there's no, nothing left for us to discuss until either you finish the work and we come up with that draft decision, correct?
I would think that's true, yeah. And I think, you know, we're gonna give hydroCAD calc's to Green International, so hopefully we'll get a response back from them in time for, for whenever we come back before you again. But it doesn't seem like two weeks is gonna accomplish much at this point.
So I think it's one of those issues where we open the meeting, continue, kind of thing. Open the public hearing, continue, but we won't expect to see you because there's no reason for it. But I assume that you'll just, Cal, will you serve as the point of communication for us so we know what your progress is on the construction part?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please, Jeff.
I don't recall if we have a letter from the applicant extending the time period for a decision that covers us.
I, I don't remember. I know I asked Samantha where, where, for the time period for the decision, and I forget what date she said. We may need to approach you, Mr. Costa, for a letter extending that, and so, send us the time.
Sure.
Let me, let me check on that. Let me, remind me to do that.
No, I will remind you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna make sure that we don't end up with a.
Constructive approval?
Yes.
I wasn't gonna say it out loud, but thank you, thank you, Attorney Costa.
At this point.
At this point, why, why are we sitting here?
So let me, that's part of my homework, and then my, my homework, I have those four items on the punch list. You got your items. We have things, and the other thing I'm gonna check is if we need to request from your, from council, an extension for the deadline for the approval. But I think at this point, we all have our marching orders. We all know what we're doing.
We, we, we do, except obviously you've gotta continue the hearing to it.
I'm about to do that, Attorney Costa.
And so what, what are we looking at just in terms of possible dates, though?
So if you take a look, we have, today's 13th, that's 27th this month, July 11th would be, I believe, the next meeting for us. Add 14 days to July 11th, so it's July 25th. I'm doing this off the top of my head. I think that's correct.
I think so.
So my guess is you guys won't be, neither side of this conversation is gonna be ready by the 11th.
By the 11th, no.
I would, I would say we're stretching the 11th. Mr. Chair.
So it continues to July 11th?
I would, I would recommend, Mr. Chair, that we open and close this, I would continue to July 11th at this point and look for a letter from you. Let them talk amongst themselves. But I would, I would suggest that we at least close this hearing now with a reopen on July 11th. That'd be my recommendation.
And is that the appropriate procedure for this?
We'll continue until July 11th.
Continue until July 11th?
That's, that's acceptable.
Yeah.
And if there, and again, we'll do on our end, we'll see what the deadline, the time is, and if we need an extension, we'll ask you for that.
Sure.
But, but this frees you from me having to come to our next meeting when there's nothing to talk about.
Well, all right, so my client was inquiring, or he was requiring as to why we wouldn't do that, why we wouldn't be ready potentially to proceed and to, to discuss a decision. I, I think the answer to that is you probably won't have an opportunity to draft the decision by then. We'll have, we'll have been to the ConCon, we're gonna be at the ConCon a week from Thursday.
Yeah.
So we'll have had that opportunity prior to your next meeting, but it sounds like two weeks may be a quick turnaround for the board.
It would be, given that, again, I don't have a town planner.
Understood.
And I gotta negotiate for some hours to help us with this.
So the hope, of course, is that if we're here on the 11th, that we're here in a position where we can discuss a decision and hopefully close the proceeding and, and get a vote.
I hope so. That's, that's.
I think all of us are looking at the goalposts now.
Right.
From the same spot on the field.
Okay.
So I'd like to move, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Nathan, please go ahead. Two comments. One is, as we consider conditions, my expectation or my assumption, I think that's correct, is that these conditions will supersede and these plans will supersede everything that's been approved to date. So if there's anything that we need to make sure gets carried through, for example, decommissioning that, that's carried through, right? That we don't miss and leave something out from, from the new conditions.
Yes. You're right, that, right, any, right.
It's, it's, if I may, it's a scope question. Everything that was in, that's in the scope of the project now will remain in the scope of the decision.
Yeah.
Correct?
I just wanna be sure that, that occurs.
But, but to be, to be clear, and this is a nuance as it come, when it comes to modifications. So we're not seeking, we didn't make an application for a new site plan approval, and that was intentional for a variety of reasons, including some of the issues we've discussed tonight relative to applicability of regulations and bylaws and things of that sort. So what we're before you for and only for are those changes we've made to the access driveway slash roadway. So the presumption would be there would be no reference in a modification decision to all of those conditions that address the solar project because those conditions still stand.
Sure.
Our decommissioning obligations, we can't get out of those obligations. We haven't asked to get out of those obligations. Those still stand. So I would envision a decision that is gonna be much more succinct than past decisions because you're only focusing on this small component of the project that is the access roadway.
And, excuse me, Mr. Chair, the access road and the general climate of the site at the end of the project.
Correct, and stormwater and all the things that are wrapped up in the road course. And so to the extent that any of those conditions conflict with earlier conditions, the new ones control, they supersede the old.
Yes.
But all the old stuff concerning the actual project itself, the landscaping we promised to the neighbors, all, that, that stuff all stays.
Yeah. I think it's important to note, make sure that's clear. Then the other is the life of the project. Someone to give myself and hopefully the board perspective as we consider getting to the finish line is, I have a question for the applicant, which is, how long do you expect this solar field to last? When would, and these, this is just crystal ball question, because we're not putting in a hospital or a university, we're putting in a, a solar field. What is, what is the life of this? And, and therefore, you know, some of the, the hand wringing we do over stormwater, right, is gonna be moot, potentially, when this is decommissioned and brought back. So I just, I just wanna kinda set, set a perspective. If you could answer it, like, do you see like 30 years, 50 years?
I mean, typically, the answer is, is that if the solar array is removed, it's around between the 25 and 30-year mark. If it does, the panels still do produce power even after the 30-year mark. A lot of projects early in the market today, just not here in town, but in the market, has not reached that 30-year mark. There's a lot of projects that are in the 15-year mark right now, and there's a lot of discussion right now of what do you do? You either repower it up, or are you gonna decommission it? Or are you gonna just let it waver to, you know, go to the 30-year and then you remove everything? So that's, discussion is happening right now in the industry. And a lot of right now is, is potentially, you know, you know, looking at maybe potentially repowering it and continuing another 20 more years.
And when solar became a thing in Massachusetts, that was, that was the standard response, 25 to 30 years. And that's why decommissioning provisions were even in the early model bylaws that the state offered, because there is a recognition that you're not building a hospital, and it's gonna need to be decommissioned at some point. There's also the reality that technology changes. And so the panels today are not the panels of 10 years ago. And so 30 years out, you're gonna have different technology. So what does that mean? Does that mean that solar's no longer a thing? Or does it mean that the solar technology is so much better, can generate so much more interest, that you're gonna replace the old panels with new panels, and that's gonna last another 30? We just don't know. But that's the reason for these decommissioning provisions, and that's the reason for these decommissioning sureties, because the reality is, at some point in the future, it's gonna be the obligation of the applicant or the applicant's successor to remove the panels. And if the applicant just gets up and leaves one day, you wanna be sure that you have the funds available to do it.
I appreciate that. The reason, the other reason I ask is also then for the long view, because we've gone through some, some applications here, we're doing change of use, right? Property was used for X, now it's used for Y. If it continues to use for 50 years, 70 years, as a solar field, an energy, energy-producing field, then it's really important that we get these calculations, these analyses right. So, you know, I'm trying to look for direction of how rigorous to, to be as we, as we try to get to the finish line.
That's a question I was pondering myself too. But then again, I guess Jim and I, we're kinda trained to not think that way. It just has to meet the standard, has to meet the standard. We don't know what the future holds, but it's a great point. We don't, it could be 25 years, it could be 100 years.
It, it's also subject to, and this is a comment, the area around it right now is a zone, single-family, I think it's acre zoning. What happens if that becomes a much more dense? It's going to give more runoff, but they have runoff issues. So there's things around it that, so we can't prepare for everything.
So it's.
So with that, I would.
Thank you.
Okay.
But with respect to time, I think we've come, at least a conclusion for this today. I think we understand what our mutual responsibilities are, we know what the lines of communication are. Great, I need.
May I?
Yes, please.
Move to continue the site plan modification public hearing. Prometheus Power Group, Air Solar II LLC, at Zero Washington Street, applies for site plan modification to address amended erosion control, drainage, stormwater management, and site access features for the Air Solar II B site to the July 25th, no, July 11th, excuse me, July 11th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Four ayes, thank you, gentlemen. So what we have here is five meeting minutes, four of which you may have received, you received my revisions today. And so I just wanna ask upfront, do you feel ready, or do, would you like more time? I'm hoping that we can be ready. Okay.
I'm sorry.
What's that?
I was shaking my head, thinking of something else, while, I hope you didn't see me shake my head, no.
No, no, no. So, let's go through these in order and go through. I need a motion to approve the December 27th, 2022 meetings as revised and submitted today.
So moved.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye.
Move to approve the February 14th, 2023.
So you just go and sign them later, that it?
Seconded.
Meeting minutes as, as submitted and revised, as revised.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
I would abstain.
Oh, he's got comments.
Hold on a second. I'm not sure that Jeff could make a motion on that, because you were abstaining.
I can move the motion, but I can't vote on it, yes, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, did we vote yet on it?
Partially. I moved, Julie seconded, you asked for a vote.
Okay.
We discussed.
We discussed, and.
Aye.
Aye, Julie.
Yes.
Aye. Chair votes aye, that's four, one abstention.
Yep.
Move to approve the February 28th, 2023 meeting minutes as, as submitted with revisions.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can everyone vote on this one? Yeah, aye, Chair votes aye, that's five ayes. Okay, March 14th.
Move to approve the March 14th, 2023 Air Planning Board meeting minutes as submitted with revisions.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we got.
I'm abstaining.
Four, four ayes, one abstention, so I. He wasn't there.
Actually, I brought the cover sheets of all of them, so I could remember which one it was.
And Heather, quick comment, in the future, make sure Julie's listed as one of the members.
I don't know how that happened. Or if you don't, just tell me, so I don't have to show up.
Well, Mark, we're all moved.
To approve the minutes of the May 15th, 2023 Air Planning Board.
Seconded.
As submitted.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye.
Yeah, I forget which one, was it, was it February 14th or March 14th, the meeting that you held on the day we closed? That was the March one, yeah, that's why, that's why I missed it, okay.
Okay, great, so we got that, I'll, I'll follow up with Samantha to sign. So, new business, we only have two things. Just wanna say that the Select Board approved our recommendation of Danny Ruiz as our, as our town planner. The official start date is July 17th, but I'm negotiating and talking to Robert right now about some per diem hours, so that we can get some help from, from Danny. And in fact, Robert just said to me at the close, just before our break, that he's, we're gonna be, he's gonna be in touch with you tomorrow, we'll negotiate that. So that's where we stand there.